Six o'clock. We're going to go ahead and call the board and welcome the guests. Two, Kyle Road, established corps.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison.
Here.
Josh Hoagland is going to do an invocation. And Henry Crocker here, Mr. Henry Crocker is going to do a pledge of allegiance. Thank y'all for coming.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we love you. Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings of life. And Lord, as we come to you in this hour of petitioning, Lord, we petition wisdom and, Lord, we petition grace. And Lord, we know that you can deliver both. And Lord, we just pray that everything that's done here would be done to glorify you. And Lord, that we wouldn't seek any recognition, but Lord, that we'd always seek your counsel in everything that we do. Lord, help us be that fervent group of people to serve the citizens of this county. And Lord, let everything be done to the uplifting of your kingdom. And Lord, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Three, approve the minutes of the July 2021 meeting appropriations, expenditures, personal actions, payroll requisitions, and approve all journals entry to be posted.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Four, public comments and updates. Has anybody here got a public comment or updates? We've got several subdivision regulations. I don't know if anybody was here on that or not.
I'm here on one of the subdivisions.
Okay. Do you want to comment? Speak.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Can you tell us which one you hear?
Tell me, Route 503.
503.
I'm going to call them. Can I get your name? Sherri Saunders. I'd like to appreciate y'all for giving us the opportunity to come speak tonight specifically on our subdivision. I'm here to speak on behalf of those that live on that road. The property in question that is to be petitioned off, one weekend after Mother's Day last year, six rounds of bio sludge dumping was dumped on that property. Here's some bio sludge I collected that day. The reason why I collected that is because as an activist in this community that lives right next to that dog food plant, this bio sludge has been coming for years. I have been working for years to make contacts and allegiance with people that could help stop the bio sludge dumping on this property. As it stands right now, we have the right to lay a lawsuit against the owners of the property for this product that was dumped on there. Last year, it was reported into Montgomery that this bio dumping took place. Earlier, I cannot remember the date off the top of my head, but the film came out, but there was a documentary made by Southern Exposure. It was called Soil. During that documentary, you'll see a clip from a Facebook Live that was myself making a Facebook Live of the driver. Stephen Wells was the driver. He was training the other gentleman who refused to give me his name. But I do know that now through Montgomery that they do have the driver's name that refused to give me his name. Stephen Wells was the driver that gave me his name that day. And I made a Facebook Live of the bio sludge dumping on this property that is in question. There are other people here tonight to talk about the dangers of adding all of these homes to this small piece of property on this single dirt road, this dirt road that I have been on since 1981. With what we have going on in this community, and I mean the community next to the dog food plant, we're called Blackbun. What we have going on in this community with bio sludge dumping is very dangerous to those involved, those dumping it, those living next to it, those having to smell it, those having to live in it. I've done buried two dogs, and I'm getting ready to bury a horse. It's very serious. And what we have, I guess I want to say is like this, what we have is a standoff. I know my rights. I worked very diligently as an activist to put myself in this position, never knowing that one day there was going to be retaliatory attack at my house of the bio sludge that I was investigating would be dumped next to my house, even though that is illegal. 500 yards is the limit. And the people that are here in this room fall within that 500 yard limit and can also lay claim to the lawsuit. There are those in this room that are, that are not in this room, that by rights have rights to that lawsuit. None of these lawsuits that I speak about have been filed. Please come in. The reason why I'm standing here and speaking about these things today is because I was biding my time. As president of the Alabama Medical Freight Lines, last year I worked on a vaccine passport bill, which we got passed in four months. I made lots of friends. And I know we have some legislators in this room right now that failed to sign on with bill on a bio sludge bill that has been put forward the Alabama Legislature for years. I know that Tommy Haynes has tried very hard to get some leeway on that bill. I know because someone made a decision out of retaliatory act to dump the bio sludge six times on my property right next to me, that opportunity is going to change. I know that whoever's the owner of that property, who I've never met, probably is in their best interest as is everyone in this small community for us to come together and speak before there's a subdivision built and my list of litigants explode because each person who buys that property, who was not disclosed of the toxic waste put on there, each person in this room that helps to make that decision, y'all are all will be involved in that lawsuit. I don't want to see this happen. I never did. My mother would not have wanted that. She was a Tyson employee. This bio sludge is owned by Tyson. When she passed away, she passed away from a disease. She called it the chicken plant that she worked at. So this is personal, very personal. And I have worked very hard to get to this point. Two months ago, I made another documentary with the same people. That's on the West Morgan East Lawrence Water Authority, water contamination in Lawrence County. That documentary is short to be coming out. So that's two documentaries I've been involved with in 12 months when it comes to environmentalism. I know that the other family that is here tonight would like to speak about the dangers of adding all the extra cars and driving on this road, single lane road, of which both sides has a ditch that cars in the past have fell into and had to be pulled out by tractor owned by that man. I hope that the people in this room tonight make the right decision for many people involved, the plants, the employees, the companies, the representatives, and everyone else that will be involved if the wrong decision is made tonight. I stand against a subdivision in this hayfield. I stand staunchly against it. And I will do everything that I can to not only fight this going through, but should a decision be made in God's will that you would like for people to live right there where this was dumped, I will make it known worldwide in the next documentary that I filmed, that the people here in Coleman County chose to continue the acts being taken by local companies, including our local chicken facilities, processing facilities, who I know for a fact are right now clocked in, processing chickens, and dumping into our local river that has not had improvement since 2017. I know this. I am hoping that we get the respect that we're asking for. And the respect that I'm asking for is this, I'd like for the owner of the property to come speak to those next to it, give us an opportunity to figure out how we want to handle this situation. Because anyone can be a part of the lawsuit. But your choice is, are you a defendant or are you, are you defending the actions or are you filing for your rights yourself? And I guess that's all really I wanted to say. And I'm sorry that it come across the way it come across. I never meant for it to be like this. I never meant for there to be a subdivision put in my yard, much less have illegal dumping take place. I didn't ask for it. Stephen Wells, the driver, was the one mad enough to tell me that he was told to dump it right where he dumped it. And I'm sure he'll testify against that because it's much easier to be a witness than it is to be a defendant. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for y'all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else? Come on, sir.
My name is Randy Stanferry. Sorry, I had a bunch of dumb work done. I can't speak much, but it appeared high.
Thank you, sir.
I live right across the road from this lady that spoke. We live on County Road 503. It's a one lane rival road. I've lived there for 40 years. This problem she's talking about, they dumped this within a hundred foot in front of my house. And they sent engineers out for this subdivision. And I've been in construction all my life. That's all I've ever done. And it was funny to me that this lamp wouldn't perk because it wasn't a sword, this stuff that she called. But yet, y'all probably, somebody has got the paperwork whether this lamp perks or not because you have to have safety tanks put in for subdivision. I got a pond within 200 yards from this property, and it holds water. So undoubtedly, this property ain't perking. So how can you put a subdivision in and property don't perk? They want to put 15 or 16 lots there on the one lane road. We got a school bus comes up. That's a endangering the children up and down this road. They can't widen the road. It goes into 503. The road is in such a shape, and it's never been fixed the 40 years that I've lived there. And where this property intersects to it, there's no way that the man can tie the driveways into it because it's in, the curve is in so steep. So all you driveways is going to have to come off on this one lane road. And so that's adding to the problem. All right, on this one lane road, we got an inch in the height to a two inch water line that serves what comes up through that. How is this going to serve 12 more houses? It don't work. On the 503 that feeds it, we got a four inch water line. That's all that goes through the county that's through that. There's no water, I mean, no fire protection or nothing on that. So how can you approve this for a subdivision? It just don't make no sense to me, how something like this can come in and they approve it. Why do we have to come and get off of our business to come and offend our community and our places from something like this? It shouldn't even, this shouldn't even be considered. People should come down that's in charge and look at the situation and say, this is bull. This shouldn't even happen. I appreciate it if y'all would consider this.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? We'll move on to new business number five, A, recognition Senator Gudger for his efforts in passing the ERS Board Act 2021-390 and Board of Equalization 2021-173 legislation.
I make a motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass.
This is in recognition of Senator Garland Gudger for his support of the ERS Board control, which gave local government better representation on the ERS Board and also the Board of Equalization to provide citizens better access to dispute any issues regarding property taxes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the honor and the award. It's always nice to be able to work with a commission that works back with you and communicates with you, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much for this. I know that the state association was one that kind of came to you, and I thank you for doing that. So what happens is on the RSA Board, there was different seats, but when this bill passed, it gave local representation back to local municipalities, local county commissions, and they got to choose and elect the members on RSA. They handle, of the RSA state employees, they handle about 63% of that money because of the people that are in that retirement system, but they only had about 45%. So when this bill passed, it allowed more of the power to be in the power of the people that are using the system anyway. So this allowed it from two seats up to five to have local control. So it's kind of like Homer will bring it back home so that our local association can be able to prove that. Well, I've got a point of privilege. We've got a great team right over here on the Sweet Potato. We've been working with them for a long time this Christmas, and I'm thankful for the charm here tonight. This is great, I'm grateful. Thank you for the award. RSA is the retirement assistance. I have a part to do, but that's for the retirement.
Good luck in May, it's good, friends.
Let's see, B, recognition students from the Learning Exchange Homeschool Program for the efforts in making the Sweet Potato Alabama State Festival.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass.
Mr. Chairman and Chairman of the School Commissioners, Krista Smith here. Heard some of her students, some of them, we've been working on this for two years, I guess, and due to COVID, it got delayed. Some moved on to college, and Garland got involved with it, and made a real fun deal. I'd like to hear it back a few minutes. I know, I don't know what time my friend is on time, but I'd like to hear it, because I'd like to tell you how the kids got involved with it and everything. We were, we carried Sweet Potatoes to Montgomery, Brittany did, and I, and we had a fun day doing it and just made something fun. And this is our 25th year of Sweet Potato Festival this Labor Day weekend. So what a better time to recognize this teacher and these kids, what they did. And I'll let Krista tell you what this is, and then we'll give them the award if it's okay.
Hi, my name is Kristin Smith, and I'm a homeschool mom and teacher. We're in Madison County, so not from Coleman County, but this is kind of our home away from home, and we definitely feel like we're adopted children. We always get treated so nicely when we're down here. We appreciate y'all a lot. I'll make this really quick. We, I was teaching an Alabama history class, and we were going to have a celebration luncheon for the bicentennial. And so I told the students, we needed to research all of Alabama's official whatevers so that we could have them at this lunch. So we had peach cobbler for Alabama's official state tree fruit and blackberries, and we had roasted turkey for Alabama's wild game bird. But what we did not find was a vegetable, which seemed, Alabama's history is completely rooted in, pardon the pun, completely rooted in agriculture. And here we are with no state vegetable. It just didn't make any sense. So after some research, we came up with the sweet potato. Sweet potato, I'll have to tell common folks, sweet potato brings over $9 million into Alabama's economy. Coleman County and Baldwin County, you guys might back and forth about who's first in sweet potato production in the state. I think y'all agree right now. And anyway, we chose the sweet potato. Doug Davenport with the Coleman County Park Center Recreation contacted him. I didn't know anything about the Sweet Potato Festival. And he made us all these sweet shirts, and he's supported us since the beginning. We did initially start with Senator Butler, who's my senator, state senator now in Madison County. But when COVID killed the bill, I guess Senator Gudger got with Senator Butler and said, hey, I need this for Coleman. And he said, yeah, you do. And so Senator Gudger has been just an absolute godsend to us. He has zoomed with my kids, he's talked to them, he's answered every question, he's explained what he does, he's taken us to the Capitol. We got to meet Governor Ivy, and it's just been an amazing learning experience and amazing personal experience just to be involved with this and all the great folks in Coleman County. We've been at the Agriplex, and we've just been treated, kind of been treated like royalty and everything. So we just appreciate him a lot, and we appreciate this tonight. The kids worked hard. This was, they came up with the sweet potato. This was their doing. I just guided the way, I guess. So thank y'all for taking the time to recognize us and the accomplishment. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh. I've only got a couple kids here. I've got some that are already on the road. I'm going to get out of the way. I wish I would, I should have brought this one out today. Sam, you should be in there too. Come on, guys, I'll come up. So I had 19 students involved, and I've got three of them here. That's my daughter, Kira, and that's Matthew Ray and Kayla Ray. Kira and Matthew are both seniors, and Kayla, here's Kayla.
I want to get one with them. I'd love to have one. It's always good.
You've got to keep your scrapbook going.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good job.
We enjoyed it. It was great.
C, recognition Tony Glover for grant assistance for improvements to the Sportsman's Light Park walking track.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Tony Glover, I have a number at one time where he'd helped us since probably around 100,000, or would you say, Tony? Over paving the walking track, bicycle racks, benches, the exercise equipment, stuff there. He's just been, you know, we're going to truly miss you, and it's like, you know, nobody really gets patted on the back until they're dead or retired. Because of COVID, we didn't get to thank you before you left, Tony, but we've got you.
You're just retired, right?
Tony, we've got you a plaque, and if he wants to read it, and also a signature sign that's going to be put on the walking track. I started tonight to show you that, how all your family and friends that'll be there, eventualizes them will replace it.
Tony, we appreciate all you've done in this county. Appreciate you.
It says, presenting to Tony Glover for your grant assistance for improvements to the Sportsman's Light Park walking track, bike racks, exercise equipment, track extensions, and signage, from the Coleman County Commission.
Yes, by all means, I haven't mattered.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this. It's been a pleasure to serve Coleman County as the county extension coordinator for the last 10 years. I did retire back in the spring. I want to introduce Kira Sam. She's my replacement. She just started in July. And then Carrie Roberts is the new foreage agent with the Extension Office. So we almost cleaned house over there. I left, and so did two other people. And our replacements are cutting in, and they're younger and better looking. So appreciate y'all continuing to support the Extension Office and support our new program.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much. D.
Yes. Make a motion to approve item C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. D, proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month. If the Grant family would step up. Thank y'all for coming. I know, I've been knowing this young man right here since you were a kid, ain't I? So bike hour.
This proclamation is in honor of Maggie Grant and all any child that's been affected by childhood cancer. We're going to read the proclamation. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, a time to recognize the children and families affected by childhood cancers and to emphasize the importance of supporting research on these devastating conditions. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and 46 children per day are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. And whereas billions of dollars of the government spends annually, only 4% goes towards childhood cancer research. Whereas in the last 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA specifically treat childhood cancer. Whereas too many families and communities have been touched by childhood cancer and its consequences, and only by increasing awareness will give any possible control and ultimately defeat this disease. And whereas Childhood Cancer Awareness Month offers all of Coleman County an opportunity to remember young lives taken too soon, honor the survivors, and celebrate progress made in treatment and recovery. Now therefore it be for law that the Coleman County Commission hereby claims the month of September 2021 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
which gave, which allowed tier-two retirement members to receive tier-one benefits? And at that time, part of the resolution, or part of the law for that act required that all tier-two levels, their contribution levels be increased. And at that time, the decision was made not to change the contribution levels for the tier-one employees, which means you've got, you've got two groups of employees receiving the same benefits but paying a different contribution amount. So this, by adopting Act twenty eleven six seventy-six, it would make all the contribution levels the same regardless of the tier status. And in doing that, as part of the budget this year, in part of the payroll budget, we built in an adjustment to offset the cost of that to the county employees. The savings from the retirement portion of it will be used to offset the increase in employee contributions.
Thank you, Judy. Yeah, appreciate it. I make a motion to approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. F, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one, authorize filing a grant application to Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Funds for Stony Lots of O H V Park in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four eighty-eight, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
I think this is the third time I've been here on this island. Yeah, it's the same as we did the last month, except on both this and item G, we got with ADECA and they wanted some technical changes within the application, so we made those changes. It moved the amounts around in item F and G, but it's still the same, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's why we came back this month, because we have to repass and get a resolution from the commission. So I would ask the commission to pass item F.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. G, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, authorize the filing of grant application for Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Funds for Stony Lots of O H V Park in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and forty-two twelve, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
As signed, as I said earlier, same.
Make a motion to approve item G.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. H, consider approval of the same excess plan for county roads on files from Rock to South for Save America PAC Alabama Trump rap.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read this plan and it is an integral thing to Rock South and to get approval of this plan.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. A, consider the new guidance to allow for a person who has had close contact exposures and has been fully vaccinated to return to work without quarantine as long as they wear a mask.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, John left me the information. This would make a few changes to our policies just to comply with the new updated CDC guidelines having to do with someone who's fully vaccinated or who's had COVID within the previous three months, that they could return to work sooner. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. G, ratify the purchase of two Tahquheuches TB two forties compact extravator from the HGAC corporate bid in the amount of forty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars each for the Coleman County Water Department.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a correction on what was on last month on these extravators. They were on a different cooperative for less money, so they were proved to be purchased last month at a higher rate, but we wanted to get this ratified just for the file, that they're actually saving about, I don't remember what the original price was, but they're saving several thousand dollars by the end of this month.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. K, authorize the chairman to reappoint Kenneth Nail to the E nine one-one board for a four-year term to expire nine one of twenty-five. Make a motion to approve item K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. L, authorize Commissioner Watson to reappoint Keith Cradle to the E nine one-one board for a four-year term to expire nine one of twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item L.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. M, reappoint Commissioner Marchman to ACCA Legislative Committee. Lord, you got me again. Got you again. I'll make a motion to approve item M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. N, authorize chairman to sign the fifty-three eleven supplement agreement number one between Harps and Aldott for twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir. This is just to keep the federal money coming in, so we can continue in fiscal year twenty twenty.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. O, consider changing the longevity payout date from December to October.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, currently our longevity payout is scheduled for December, we want to change that to October, it's administratively easier to do it that way, because the longevity date is September the thirtieth, it ends at the fiscal year, so if we could just pay it out as soon as possible right after that, instead of waiting a couple months, it's a lot easier administratively for payroll purposes.
Make a motion to approve item O.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Judy, thank you so much. P, consider the renewal of employees retirees health insurance for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. Coleman County maintains a self-insured policy that is administered by Blue Cross, no change in funding levels of fees for twenty twenty-two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just an amendment to the enrollment agreement between Coleman County and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. Coleman County does have a self-insured policy, but it is administered by Blue Cross, so every year we have to sign a new agreement. But with the renewal proposal that they sent, there's been no change in funding levels or fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item P.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Q, consider the renewal of stop-loss insurance community reincorporated Gerber Life Insurance Company, no change in rates for twenty twenty-two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so along with the fact that we have a self, we are self-insured, we maintain a stop-loss insurance policy to cover us for catastrophic claims, so that if, you know, a certain claim or the total overall claims reach a certain level, then our stop-loss insurance kicks in, and so we don't have that liability to the county for open-ended, you know, claims. And so our current stop-loss carrier is this community RE, we've been with them a year, and we'd like to renew the contract. There's been no change in fees this year and no lasers put on the contract where they would identify certain individuals that they would exclude. There's none of those this year, and there's no change in rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Man, I can't believe insurance and no change in rates follows the same sentence. That's right. Yeah, it is. Yeah, I don't want to exit, I'm gonna knock on wood. Make a motion to approve item Q.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. R, authorize Coleman County HR manager in conjunction with department heads, elected officials, are there to sign any, create a revised county job descriptions to be reviewed by the county administrator and county attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so as you guys know, I've just gone through an update of all Coleman County job descriptions that some of those haven't been looked at since twenty-eleven. I mean, with all the department managers, and we've updated all the job descriptions. So in doing that, I realized that there wasn't any mechanism in place for, you know, creating job descriptions or revising them or anything like that. So I'd like to put something in place that authorizes the HR manager in conjunction with the department heads to create or revise the job descriptions and have them reviewed by the county administrator and county attorney before putting them into effect.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item R.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Judy, we want to thank you for all your hard work.
I can sit down now.
Hard work. A, consider approval of payment in the amount of ten thousand to Goodwin Mills in Cavewood for Solid Waste Study. Make a motion to approve item A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. T, approve construction of metal building at Sportsman's Lake Park by Bulldog Steel Structures to be used for storage and park enhancement in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars pending ADECA approval.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a building that they need for storage for park items for different events that we have. It would be pending ADECA approval simply because that's a land water conservation fund property at this point, and so we want to make sure we follow their process. Shane and Doug and the park staff have researched this, and Shane's found some buildings and they've kind of all come to an agreement. This is thirty-nine thousand four sixty-five is less than the public works bid amount, and this would be construction which would fall under public works, so that's where we stand at this point. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item T.
We gotta do this because we moved them out of the rescue. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. U, approve annual rebuild in Alabama road plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the county transportation plan that will project or show the route that we plan on expanding our fiscal year twenty twenty-two gas access lines. Some of the routes that we concluded, of course, are sections of two twenty-two, seven eighty-three, and eleven forty-five, and as well seven oh two. And I will have that final plan presented to you for submission to the ACCA and the state by the end of the month. But I've got most of the details more than just final touches on the festival. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it, Brian. Make a motion to approve item U.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. V, award bid number thirteen fifty-nine to Chambers America Products for two sidearm mowing machines in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, these are, these were bid out as gas engine machines, and Chambers was the lowest bidder for gas engine machines and the only bidder for gas engine machines. So we documented all that and why that decision was made, and we recommend the purchase of Chambers America. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. W, consider approval of direct placement warrants for Premier Bank in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred for the purchase of Chamber American Products Incorporated machines, bid number thirteen fifty-nine.
This ties into the previous item there, the interest rate will be two percent or less on this money, and in order to make sure that we maintain our reserves, not knowing what revenues might do next year, and having moved quite a bit of money to the roads this year, I'm recommending that we do this in order to maintain those reserves, and if we pay that off early, then that'd be money free there.
Make a motion to approve item W.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. X, extend bid number thirteen fifteen for pest control services to American Pest Control for one year.
We're just asking that we renew this at the same rate, just renewing the bid, and we can do that up to three years, so. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Y, extend bid number thirteen twenty-nine for the service of sheriff's office and other county vehicles to Havoline Express Lane for one year.
This is the same.
Make a motion to approve item Y.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Z, proposal plat Bryant Road subdivision, a minor subdivision containing twenty-one lots located on County Road seventeen sixty-two.
Mr. Chairman, this plat does meet our current subdivision regulations, and I do recommend the approval of this preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Double A, proposal plat Bailey Road subdivision, a minor subdivision containing three lots located on County Road seventeen twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I do recommend the approval of this preliminary plat that does meet our current regulations.
Make a motion to approve item double A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. B B, proposal plat Union Hill subdivision, a minor subdivision containing eleven lots located at the intersection of County Road five oh four and five oh three. I think that's what it is. Is that what they had concerned, or is that what they had?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would love to address some of the concerns that were spoken on earlier. I just want to make everyone aware that this is only an approval of the preliminary plat, there's still the final plat that will go forward and require the county engineer's signature. Normally there's construction in between preliminary and final plat, the minor subdivision, this one doesn't have any roads being constructed, so it could be very quick if they would approach us for the final plat signatures. As far as the question about the property not curtained, one of the signatures that will be required will be the Department of Public Health, and they will have to assign that before the final signatures are made by the SOF and appropriate judge. And I think that will be addressed by the Department of Public Health, as far as being referred to in subcutane systems. In regards to widening the route and some of the driveway issues, widening the route, they were required to provide additional right-of-way. The current right-of-way for the five oh three shows to be a twenty-foot right-of-way, and they were to provide an additional twenty, or thirty feet, make a fifty-foot wide right-of-way, which in the later day will be widened. If the, for the driveway installation, that's going to be a separate process that will be approved by the engineer's office as each applicant approaches the road department for installation in that driveway. We do come out and inspect and ensure that they are going to be placed in a location along the way that will be safe and at least accessible. And where the utilities, they are notified before these plats are approved, so that they
Normally, there's construction in between preliminary and final plat, the minor subdivision. This one doesn't have any roads being constructed. So it could be very quick that they would approach us for the final plat signatures. As far as the question about the property not curtained, one of the signatures that will be required will be the Department of Public Health, and they will have to assign that before the final signatures are made by the sub and appropriate judge. And so that will be addressed by the Department of Public Health as far as being referred to put in subcutane systems. In regards to widening the route and some of the driveway issues, widening the route, they were required to provide additional right of way. The current right of way for the 503 shows to be a 20-foot right of way, and they were to provide an additional 20 or 30 feet, maybe a 50-foot wide right of way, which in the later day will, the road can be widened. If the, for the driveway installation, that's going to be a separate process that will be approved by the engineer's office as each applicant approaches the road department for installation of that driveway. We do come out and inspect and ensure that they are going to be placed in a location along the road that will be safe and at least accessible. And where are the utilities? They are notified before these plats are approved so that they can make plans for, no, any expansions or improvements to the utility systems in the area. So that issue's already been addressed, and that will be up to the utilities as far as how they make plans or preparations for these expansions. And now, as far as the subdivision regulations, some of the issues with the environmental concerns, those I would say are outside of the scope of our subdivision regulation. We're only here to make sure that there's adequate access, spacing, and, or say, square footage for home building, et cetera, drainage, roads. I would say, I would advise you to maybe approach one of the state departments that actually address these environmental concerns.
I have already approached these departments, so they are well aware. The ball is in my court, as it is now. So depending on what decision is made, because I know my wants in this matter is, I can't imagine anyone would want to live on such contaminated property. And I can't imagine that any elected official here in Coleman, Alabama, once they had found out about the contaminated property, would want anyone living on such contaminated property. We are very concerned about, in my case, the loss of some of my animals that are now starting to drop dead. So with that being said, I hope that the people here in Coleman County want better for themselves and their neighbors. I want that we don't allow 11 homes to move in on contaminated property so that their children ruin on contaminated ground. And when they start getting sick and questions start being asked, I will still be standing there on my little bit of slip of property saying, "I said it the whole time. I fought for it the whole time." I'm going to make a movie about it. We're going to write a book about it. And this right here is going to be used in the court. This is the bio sludge that was dumped on the property. The person who owns this property now wasn't there when that was done. It was the previous owner. The previous owner who specifically told the driver, Stephen Wells, twice, once in a text, once in a phone call, that he would start spraying in my driveway as a retaliatory act. Once again, this can be brought up in federal court because this is a federal court case when I file it. It's not anything that I will file here in the state court. It's a tort.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I know some of the language in the state regulations and the county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know it does say that, you know, if they meet our county regulation, it says we shall approve the preliminary plat, shall approve the plats. And I will welcome, before I sign the final plat, I will welcome any written statements from you at least addressing these concerns and giving me specific details, and I will definitely take that into consideration before making any signatures on the final plat.
Please allow me the opportunity to give you that information. So provide me an email address or a business card or something that I can start to educate you on this process.
Yes, ma'am. I would be glad to.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I have one question. Did I understand what you say about the road widening? That it's in the, in the plans for it to be widened on their side?
Yeah, it is. Just the right of way at the moment. Now, you know, in the future, you know, it will be the county expanding the route or widening. Now, they haven't proposed anything on widening the route themselves, but they were required to provide the right of way, additional right of way.
They have landowner, yes.
Yes.
Not us.
That's correct.
Because we're on the other side.
Yes, they can't dedicate, they can't dedicate someone else's property. It has to be theirs.
What about the waters, eh?
Yes, again, that would be something we can address in the final plat. If you have any issue with anything, any drainage coming up on your property, please definitely contact, I'll give you my contact information. Definitely encourage you to contact us as much as you can while we're waiting. Yes, if there's no further comments, again, this is just for the preliminary plat. There's a final plat to go forward after this. Based on the information that we have, Mr. Chairman, I do recommend the approval of the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B. Nice to know that's preliminary plat.
I'll, I'll second that motion, but I want to, I want to try and clarify our position here to Miss Stansberry and, excuse me, Mr. Stansberry and Ms. Saunders.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I'll get your name wrong. I apologize if I do. But although environmental issues are our concern, we have a standard that we have to go by. If somebody buys a piece of property and it meets the minimum requirements for, to be subdivided and somebody built, then we have no restrictions that keeps that person from being able to do that.
It doesn't keep them from being sued either.
Yes, ma'am, and I understand that.
This is a standoff, and I'm not going to budge from my position.
Yes, ma'am, and I do understand that.
So that's why the decision needs to be made now, is the property owners, they need to decide where and how they want to move forward on this because I'm hoping for negotiation.
Yes, ma'am. That's outside of, that's outside of the area.
I like the primary property.
That's outside of the area or the scope of our responsibilities of what we can do.
Certainly.
We have to meet, if they meet those minimum requirements, we're not going to prevent those people from being able to apply for a plat and.
Absolutely, they have the right to apply for the plat, such as those people that will be moving there will have a right to sue because they were not properly notified due to the contamination. Those that this property abuts right next to my property specifically, whichever time it rains, that bio sludge comes down my driveway, we will be forced on that road to make a decision, those who want to join the lawsuit and those who do not. In this state, if you will do just a little bit of research, you'll see where the bio sludge dumping, there has been recently some movement on the actions against these companies. And I'm well aware of these movements, and I hope to see more movement against those companies and people involved in the decisions that were made to make that happen that day. And then the next three days, when they get coming back after being told to stop.
Right, right. I understand, and I do appreciate your comment because this, actually, I didn't know a lot of this existed. So, you know, if I can.
I could talk about that more how this been on the ancient high water line. I mean, we have a problem getting water pressure like it is.
It's, who, that's Hansville Water System?
Yes, that's Hansville Water System.
Yeah, and I, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I understand that, and I do appreciate your comment. I really do.
That'd be, I mean, that'd be good utility company. I would definitely approach them about what their plans are on the expansion.
And where you, we take with them, I even altered to give them an easement from 91 Highway up to 504 to get us a water main where we could have a larger, and they turned it down. So they're stuck on a four-inch water line, and to have a subdivision on a four-inch water line, that's real smart, I mean.
Yeah, they, I'm sure that I have been agreeing.
And putting that more families on a one-lane road, that's even smarter. I mean, it don't take a genius. Y'all just come out and travel that road, and you'll save what we real concerned about. The man gets his money and he goes way ahead. Our kids gets injured on the road that rides a scooter up a one-lane road. That's what our concern is. It ain't about, well, you can watch the news, you can say where our country is going anyway.
I do appreciate your comment. I really do. And it brought to light some things that probably needed to be brought to light. But a lot of the issues that you're having is outside of, like I said, it's outside of the scope of what we do other than dealing with the roads and approving the plats.
As far as the roads, again, that's something we can address when we do the driveways. And I know well, it's future expansion on that roadway now that gives us additional right of way. They have access also from 504, I believe, and some of the right of way. And again, I can't say without looking at each specific site, but as we're approached, we can address.
When you come down there, I live there, I appreciate it to go with you around through there and look at that over with you.
Yes, sir. Would be glad to. Thank you, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. C. C. Proposal plat at Water Landing subdivision, a minor subdivision retaining five lots located in section 31, Township 12, South Range 5 West.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this subdivision, subdivision plat does meet our current regulation. I do recommend the approval of this preliminary plat.
Brian, I have that, but where is, where is that at exactly? I looked it up, but I couldn't remember. I'm sorry.
Does it say what part of the county this is?
That's what I was. Yeah, I think so.
It's going to be in Smith Lake, I believe, in the Cole Springs area.
Okay.
Okay, we can't prove it, but it's here.
Make a motion to approve item Double C.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Number six, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, 4:00 p.m. in the commission meeting room. Seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, 6:00 p.m. in the commission meeting room. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Commission, uh, lead agent, February 26th is waking up the cycle morning.
She's already scolded me about it, Brian. You got to get out there, Brian.
Has she talked to you about this before?
Yes, sir. A couple of times.
Well, hopefully, we can ease the pain now with this equipment.
How you got hedge bushes wrecking the road?
For those with that chambers issue, one of the two plats we're purchasing.